Okay, good evening. We'd like to get started. First thing we'll do is welcome you to the Heartland Township Planning Commission Meeting of February 23rd, 2017. If you wouldn't mind, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Keith, would you take a roll, please?
Sure.
Mr. Fox? Here. Jeff Newsom?
Here.
Joe Kalani?
Here.
Sue Grissom?
Here.
Mike Mitchell?
Here.
Tom Murphy?
Here.
Okay, rolls complete. All right, next up, item four, approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved, support.
Motion from Commissioner Newsom, second from Commissioner Kalani, are there any changes? I'd just like to delete item 12, which is just a carryover from before. Is that all right with both of you?
Yeah, that's true.
All right, great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carries. Next up is call to the public. If you are here for any of the items on the agenda this evening, now would be the time to come forward or at the end of the meeting. If you were here at our last meeting for the Heartland Glen rezoning, during the middle of that application, we had a call to the public. That is not the type of meeting this is this evening. This is a regular planning commission meeting, so if you'd like to speak in regards to any of the agenda items, including the Heartland Glen rezoning, now would be the time.
Or non-agenda.
Or non-agenda items. Sure, come on up for her. Do you have your sign-up sheet there, Troy?
Yeah, Troy.
You want to explain that?
Actually, I have to put my glasses on?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we take minutes of all of our meetings, and to help prepare those minutes, we want to accurately depict the people that speak by having their names printed on there when they speak. So, if you are able to, we would ask you can. If you're not able to, you're still welcome to speak, but...
No, I'll put it fine.
Can I do that first?
See how quickly I can write? Not delay.
You want to start the clock till you're done with it?
Oh, thanks.
Oh, your time's up.
Can you tell they know me? So, I wanted to discuss the Heartland Glen rezoning. I think there were actually several people who contacted me today who know that I have come forward to the board different times to discuss issues and concerns about the development that goes on in Heartland. And I think we can do this intelligently, but I also think that there are some concerns with changing this to a condensed housing development. And I'm generalizing here and for sure talking about myself, but this community is more of a rural feel. People move here because, not because we have a downtown like Brighton, or not because we have a big shopping plaza like some of the folks that did the Meyer Development want. We have a rural feel. It's a country-type of feel in this community. And putting homes in that are that condensed, number one, sets a precedent for future development, but number two, as far as I'm aware, there is no requirement for a developer that comes in to update the infrastructure, for roads, for policing, for all of the things that are accompanied with that increased population density. Right now, we don't have a full-time police department. We have the sheriffs that come in, or the police, from the state police that we need as we need them. The traffic that was generated from just the shopping plazas without additional residencies, there needs to be some accommodation, whether it's condensed housing or additional development in a regular fashion. And I guess the concern that I have at this point is, we had developers come in and say, "We know what's best for you, and we have the Walmart and Meyer." We tore apart all of the land that was associated with that, and now we have a Meyer and a Taco Bell and nothing else. So, I would urge caution in approving something that's that large of a development when we really need to consider what has come here in the past. So, that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? Come on up.
Couple of concerns about the development itself. I understand that there's 602 sewage hookups, so it's unlikely that there would be additional houses on top of it. I guess I'm suspicious, because I've dealt with others, that all of a sudden, instead of 50 houses, ended up with 80 houses, just because of the way they shuffled around in the last phase. So, are we talking about a cap of 602? Or is there room to shuffle in an extra building, or a shopping center, or gas station? I mean, what is to build cap on it? The other things are, is there going to be a traffic light at Cundy and 59, so people can get in and out without hitting the 5:00 traffic rush? When they sink the wells, is there any guarantee that... I'm sorry, right now, when they build a new house and they sink a well, our water is odd tasting, odd smelling for a week or so, because things are unsettled. Is there any research or looking into it to make sure that 600 wells going in are not going to disrupt the water flow for people nearby? I don't know what the underground aquifer looks like. Are there any studies? I mean, if somebody's got an 80-foot well, and now they're going to have to have a 120-foot well, is there anything that's... I'm not saying this very well. Is there any guarantees or any reassurance for the people to have shallower wells, that they're not going to need deeper wells in order to have a good quality water? How's that?
To answer it real quick, we're not here for a site plan review. We're just here for a zoning change. And all those concerns that you're talking about would probably be addressed at the time when the applicant has to come in for a site plan review and identify. He may not even have all the, utilize all the REUs at that point. So, for some of your concerns, we should, I think we need to let her know that we're not here for a site plan review.
Correct.
Okay, I was just arguing against the density.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, I don't know what else... Okay, I'm done.
Okay.
You did good.
You did fine, you did fine. Anyone else? Again, for those that came late, this is the time, if you wish to speak on any of the agenda items or non-agenda items, this will not be run like the meeting of two weeks ago, where in the middle of the application for the rezoning, we had you come forward. That does not happen this evening. So, anybody else on any agenda item or non-agenda item? You'll have an opportunity at the end of the meeting also.
Hi, I'm Nancy Redner. I live at 2202 Wilson Lane. I watched the meeting on the video last week, because I could not come. And I heard what people were saying, and I really would like the township to listen to all the homeowners in the township, not just the developers. I was here for a lot of the meetings when Mayberry came in, and both Planning Commission and Township Board kept pointing to the comprehensive plan, saying, "This was our goal." And changing this property to high-density from medium-density is not the goal of the comprehensive plan. If Heartland is not going to follow that plan, they need to remove it from the public, because people coming in, buying homes, are looking at that and saying, "Okay, this piece of property will only have that possibly in the future." And so now, if you go and change a large piece of property to high-density, when someone's thinking right now it's a golf course and it could go medium, but okay. They're going to think about buying that property if it's medium. They're not going to buy it if it's high. So, if I want to sell my property, I can't now, because that changed, and my property is not worth what it was when it was proposed medium-density. The other thing is, last year, someone came in and wanted to develop apartments and stuff at 23 and 59, and the township came in and said, "Nope, that's not in our plan. We want high commercial." Well, high-density at Heartland Glen is not in the plan. That's not what we want. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, you will have an opportunity also at the end of the meeting. So, we'll close the call to the public. We have no public hearing this evening. We'll move on to item seven, and the first item up is 7A. This is site plan number 17-001, Shops at Walden Woods. Well, good evening and welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Flank.
All right. If you would all introduce yourself for those of those that don't know you.
I'm Frank Kraus. Is this working?
Yep.
Okay. And we have Michelle Schaefer and Brian Kraus. It takes three of us to replace Jeff Thompson. Jeff Thompson, as you know, has been the voice of Shops at Walden Woods for many years, and he retired effective the end of the year. So, Michelle is actually taking over much of his role at Robert B. Atkinson Company.
Well...
And we're here to provide her with some support.
All right, good deal. Well, why don't we let Troy introduce the project you have, and then anything you'd like to add, and then we'll have the planning commission join in. Troy, you want to give us an introduction to this?
The Shops at Walden Woods is a planned development. This is an aerial image that shows the general area. This would be Highland Road or M59 in this area, and then this is old US 23. So, it's right at the northwest corner of that intersection. This basically is the Shops at Walden Woods Shopping Complex. As part of this development, it was approved as a planned development. Part of that included signage. There's an identification sign at the extreme corner in this location here. There's some other monument signs that are used to identify the tenants within this complex. And you have Kroger is probably one of the major anchor tenants here. Target would be another major anchor tenant. I think CVS Pharmacy is another major anchor tenant within this complex. But in addition to that, there are a number of smaller tenants in the retail shopping complex, maybe to the west of Kroger, in this general area here. And the way that the planned development was set up with the signage that was part of that, the major tenants received some monument signs. The signage that was allocated for the other, I'll call them smaller tenants, and these words, "major tenants" and "minor tenants," those are my terms. These are not specific terms to the planned development. Those are just terms I'm using to help distinguish between the two types of tenants. So, the smaller tenants didn't have as much signage allocated to them. The applicants or the owners have expressed an interest to change their identification sign, which was specifically identified in the PD agreement, as this sign you see here. And that project identification sign, as part of the PD, was, I'm presuming, intended to just identify the name of this development, the Shops at Walden Woods. There was, on one of the columns, designation for the Resort and Conference Center over here, but then there's really no other signage that is allocated on this particular sign. The developers, the applicants, the owners have expressed an interest to incorporate some additional signage for their smaller tenants on here. But in order to do that, it requires an amendment to the PD to physically amend this sign you see here that's part of their PD agreement. So, the applicant is requesting to essentially change the PD, or modify the PD agreement, to incorporate a sign like this. So, this sign would have, would keep the Shops at Walden Woods in the center, and then it would incorporate some tenant signage on one column and retain the Resort and Conference Center that currently exists, and then it would allow some additional signage over on the other column that you see there. So, in order for them to make this change to the identification sign, it requires an amendment to the planned development, which requires planning commission review and recommendation, and then ultimately township board approval. So, that in a sense is the request, and that is the process they have to go through.
Great. Anything you'd like to add?
Troy, you did a marvelous job.
Thanks.
Thank you.
He covered it for you, huh?
He did. Well, we've had several conversations.
Great.
Basically, the intent behind this is to allow, and I'll use Troy's terminology, the smaller shops the opportunity to be able to promote themselves, because it's set back far enough from 59 that when you're driving by, it's very hard to see some of those store names being set so far back. Plus, now you've got like the CVS on the corner. So, this enables the smaller shops the opportunity to have visibility. We have limited the new sign to only include those smaller shops. So, CVS, Kroger, and Target, who are currently on the other monument signs, with the new amendment, would not be permitted on this existing sign. So, I'm not going to be running into the same problem that I, I shouldn't say problem. I will be helping my smaller tenants. I will be giving them like a shot in the arm.
Great.
So, that's the intent behind wanting to change the signage.
Perfect. You explained it very well.
Okay, trial by fire.
All right. Planning Commission, any questions, comments? If you recall, we sort of previewed this a month or two ago. Any additional comments you want to add to it? There is a recommended motion on page six, if you're so inclined.
I move to recommend approval of the site plan application 17-001, and request to amend the planned development agreement for the Shops at Walden Woods planned development, and to modify the project identification sign as shown in Exhibit E1, based on the following findings. Number one, the planning commission has determined that the proposed modifications of the project identification sign are reasonable and provide additional sign options for the tenants who are not one of the major tenants in the development. Two, the planning commission has determined that the proposed modification, as shown in Exhibit E1, are consistent with the original monument sign, and the dimensions of the sign are not changing. Three, the planning commission has determined that the proposed sign panels assist in directing patrons to the development in the Resort and Conference Center. Four, the planned development agreement, which is the third amendment, shall be modified to require that all sign panels on the identification sign and all future panel signs shall be constructed of an opaque material to remain consistent with the township zoning ordinances. And last, number five, approval of the PD amendment language of the third amendment and Exhibit E1 dated January 23rd, 2017, shall be subject to the approval of the township attorney.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend approval from Commissioner Mitchell, a second from Commissioner Newsom. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
It wasn't that easy?
It was. That's because I had great meetings with Troy.
Well...
And we worked together well.
He's a great resource.
Well, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Have a great night. All right, next up on our application, our agenda is the rezoning application number 361, the Heartland Glen Development LLC. Mr. Yaldau, you want to come forward? Great. And anybody else you'd like to have? And we'll let Troy bring everybody up to speed, maybe reintroduce the project for us this evening.
Thank you. The property that's under consideration, if you'll look at the, an aerial of this area, just to kind of give a general description of it. It is south of M59. M59 would be in this location, which is an east-west major arterial, and it's near the intersection with Cundy Road. I believe Cundy Road has two intersections with M59, so this would be the easternmost intersection with M59. The applicant property owner owns the Heartland Glen Golf Course, which is about 380-some acres, and then in addition, there are two almost one-acre each lots up on Cundy. And in total, I believe we're looking at 384 acres of land that the applicant owns. They are requesting to rezone this northernmost 73 acres. So, it's not a request to rezone all 384 acres. It's a request to rezone, and I think it's 72.86 or something like that. So, I'm referring to it as approximately 73 acres in this area. And I have a zoning map, and I'll zoom in on that. So, you can see, this is the Heartland Township zoning map. This would be M59 going east and west, 23 over here going north and south. And this is the general area that we're talking about, and the property is zoned CA. That's Conservation Agricultural. That's a predominantly single-family residential category. This zoning category specifically consumes the vast majority of the township is in this particular category. The CA category essentially is designed for homes that would be on well and septic, and would primarily be at a minimum two acres, minimum lot size, 200-foot of lot width with 200, or I'm sorry, two acres of area. The applicant is requesting to rezone to the, what's called the high-density residential category. This particular category is a single-family category. I think by its name, it maybe misleads a little bit. It's a single-family zoning category. It is the township's most dense single-family zoning category, and the applicant is requesting to rezone the northern 73 acres, or approximately 73 acres in this area here. They have provided a survey and legal description. As part of a rezoning, they have to provide a legal description of that area to be rezoned. They've also provided a concept plan of what a development could look like on this area. Keep in mind that this development is really not part of the rezoning request. It's merely an illustration, if you will, of what the applicant intends to do and what a development might look like on that property. And you can see the actual boundary and the limitations of that 73-acre rezoning area, and you get an illustration, if you will, of the lots and the street network and so forth. And the rezoning request requires review by the planning commission. It requires a recommendation from the planning commission, and then ultimately the township board is the final decision-making body with respect to the rezoning. So, that in a sense is current zoning, the proposed zoning, the general area, and the process that's involved. And certainly I'll be available for any questions or comments that you may have.
Okay. Sam, would you like to add anything before we open it up for discussion here?
I don't have anything to add, except to say that we feel that we are compatible with the neighborhood next door to us, and also to the west. The zoning is very much in, what is the, I lost that word. To the east of us, it's much, much denser than what we are requesting. And also, I must add that the planning, the township board on July 27th, 2011, imposed upon this property additional residential equivalent units of sewer that we have to use. So, we need the density, and we feel that this density at this point is really not very high-density to what we're going to need in the future to use all the sewer taps that were allocated to this property. And I will answer any questions that you may have.
I have one. Can you repeat that last statement?
The resolution number 11-R032 on July 27th, 2011.
Not at the beginning. No, did you say that in the future you won't have enough, that the density that you're currently proposing, that you won't have, that the density will be higher?
We will need a much higher density in order for us to use all the 603 taps that were allocated to this property, yes.
Higher than what you're proposing now?
Yes, yes.
Well, there's two things from my point of view. There is no guarantee that you get to use all 603 REUs. That's not the discussion tonight. We're just talking about 73 acres.
Yes, we are.
So, I won't muddy that. And the other thing is, my opinion, I'll interrupt, is that as I said two weeks ago, I believe as we move further away from our infrastructure, M59 in this case, that we would probably see less density, not more. So, while we're only talking 73 acres, I don't want to bring all 380 or 90 into this conversation, and it's hard not to, because it's out there. It's hard to imagine it getting denser as you move away from M59, not less dense.
There is a lot denser, there's a lot denser projects to the east of us. There's a mobile home park.
Yes.
They use one REU per unit.
Yeah, what I'm trying to keep strict...
I want to focus on the 73 acres now.
So do we. It's hard to not, as we had two weeks ago, to not bring the others in. The other acreage is not part of tonight's discussion.
Not at all.
For everybody's benefit, but I'm just making, good planning practices would tell you, as you move away from M59 or old US 23, that you would see less density. How far back in it goes before it becomes less dense, I don't know. I don't know that, the other comment to make is, has this plan been reviewed by an engineer? You know?
Not...
Because I'm not sure that, we're not talking about the site plan tonight, I'm not sure that you can get those 179 units on these 73 acres, because we're not talking about a site plan. You know, there isn't a lot of detention on there and a lot of other things that...
We will deal with all of that, of course.
You will. I'm just, for... I'm just, for everybody's benefit, we're not talking about even 179 houses. What we're talking about is HDR, which is, you know, approximately 8,000 square foot lots.
Yes.
That's what we're talking about.
Yes.
Not that site plan.
No.
Because that site plan may not be reality.
Yeah, may not be the same.
And so the only reason I brought it up was Mr. Yaldo noted that.
Yep. Well, I think it's good to have the conversation so everybody knows what we're thinking. If you don't agree that, if you think the HDR density can go all the way down to lountry, then, you know, say that. I just can't quite envision that myself, but there is no plan, and we're only talking about 73 acres.
I, I think it would be helpful, at least for the public as well, is a reexplanation or an explanation that we discussed last, what constitutes HDR, you know, high-density residential, what's permitted in that, in that zoning classification. Maybe we could have Troy kind of go through that a little bit. And then provide, I think Troy should also give an example of what perhaps HDR would look in, because we have HDR, high-density residential in our community already. My question isn't, I'm not sure, but isn't the Heritage Meadows, the Heritage Meadows here HDR?
The Heritage Meadows is not HDR, it's PD.
Oh, that's a PD. The one over here across, right down the park? What is that, what is that called?
That's, I think that's Heritage Meadows.
Okay.
I think the applicant claimed that he intended to.
Built the same product.
Yes, that what he was intending to do would be very similar to that.
It's my project. Heritage Meadows was my project.
I know, that's what we're, but I, I think it, there was a.
I don't recall the zoning.
I want to be sure, to make sure that we clarify that that was a PD.
Oh, I can.
And whether or not that development is consistent with the HDR designation, because at the last meeting, you did mention or indicate that that's what, the type of development you would be looking to put.
Yes.
At that location, which is serviced by sewer from the M-59 corridors.
When.
And I want to be sure that, I, I want that answered. I think we need to have that answered.
I think, Troy, could you spend a minute on that? And then I, I pulled up a memo that you wrote us back in April that I'm passing down the table, we'll share with the public in a minute.
So, you can't always judge, I guess the saying is, can't judge a book by the cover. Well, I guess you can't necessarily judge a zoning category by its title. You really need to look at the, this is the zoning ordinance. This is the zoning ordinance specifically to HDR, high-density residential. You can read the intent section here, and it talks specifically about the HDR district being intended for single-family detached dwellings within stable neighborhoods, and it's typically designed to be serviced with public water and sewer. So that's generally what you're looking at with this category. It'll, it's, single-family detached homes is one of the predominant permitted uses in this category. This is a full list of all the uses permitted. Certainly, there's public and private parks. He could propose a public or private park in the 73 acres he's proposing to rezone, essential public services, also state-licensed residential facilities, which would be adult care facilities or childcare facilities, up to six individuals. Those are your permitted uses. So the, the predominant one there is single-family detached dwelling units. There are some other special land uses, which require coming back in front of the Planning Commission for a public hearing, and those are churches, nursing or convalescent homes, again, adult care or childcare facilities greater than six, essential public buildings, and then public or private schools. So those are all of the uses that are permitted in the HDR district. I think probably another key component is when you look at the HDR development standard requirements, the minimum lot size, 8,400 square feet, minimum lot width, 70 feet. So, and it gives a general layout of a, of the building envelope with the setbacks. So that's the HDR category. I think by its title, sometimes it's viewed as something different than that. It's a single-family zoning category. It, it allows for the smallest lot size for single-family homes in, in Heartland Township.
So, to ask my question, because I think people have, have certain views of that, because I, I tell you, you look at that site plan, you think, oh my gosh, what's coming, right? What, what are the zoning classifications of, like Forest Brook Hills, which is nearby, and what is Autumn Woods?
Well, I think we can help you with that. I passed a memo down. Tom's got it right now. Tom, you want to read, well, all right, I guess I will.
Which are all.
You're passing it back because you don't want to talk. Troy wrote this memo back to the Planning Commissioners in, in April, when we were looking at the Mayberry project, and there were some comparisons that I was trying to get to. So I went back to the Mayberry packet and found this memo, which I had forgotten about. And Tom had started this conversation with Troy, and he had gone through and done an analysis of some existing developments. How many units do we have per acre? Mr. Yaldo's proposal for 170 acre, eight acres with 73 units is 2.44 dwelling units per acre. The Newberry next door to it, at 444 units, is 4.9 units per acre, so it's twice what he is asking for. Autumn Woods is 1.97 compared to 2.44. Mill Point, 3.14 compared to 2.4. So if those help you. The Forest Brook isn't in here, there are a couple others, but it was a, it was a very broad comparison, but those were the closest ones, and I bring up the special planning area because it's next door, and there's been some misinformation in there of a comparison to the two, and there really isn't a comparison to the two. It's half as dense. So when you look at the acreage and the number of units. So I wanted to clear that up with everybody, that this is not an adjoining or another special planning area.
So Troy, if I can, on your calculation, Mill Point is 3.14, and Autumn Woods is 1.97.
Yeah, that was, that was about a year ago. So Mill Point would be this area right here. This is the only subdivision that exists in the HDR category, and when those estimates were made, we basically just calculated, well, how big is this area? And giving a rough estimate, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head how big this area is. And then we calculated, well, how many lots are in there, and came up with that number.
Yeah, and, and Mill Point, just for clarification, that was not decided by the township, but by a court order.
No, I think the thing to keep in mind with all of this, again, you can't look at, if, if anything, I believe that when we get to a site plan review on an HDR proposal, I, I really question whether you're going to get 178 lots in there personally. This is not the discussion for it, this isn't the site plan review, but that is packed in there so tight, there's no detention or retention for the most part, so, but that's another conversation. Really, what you're giving him is the right to build properties with 8,400 square foot lots with 70-foot frontages. He can pry and put in as many as he can, but he has all sorts of zoning ordinance requirements to follow. He still has to follow the ordinance for streets, for widths. He'll still have Drain Commissioner, he'll have Health Department, he'll have all of those other criteria that are going to fall on top of a site plan review. So whether he gets 178 or 138, I don't think we know until he produces a plan and has it reviewed.
It's just peculiar to me, because I know Autumn Woods, and it just seems like those lots are larger than Mill Point's lots. That's why I was asking that question, of Autumn Woods at 1.97 versus Mill Point at 3.14.
1.97 per acre.
Per acre, so it is.
Those are bigger houses than that.
In Mill Point, so you're right.
But those are, those are bigger houses.
Units per acre.
You're almost two, thank you for that.
Perfect.
Yeah. But see, that's the overall development, including all the open space, the roads, all of it. So it doesn't address lot size. And really, what we're talking about in HDR is the criteria that the HDR category has, or the, the standards it has in the zoning ordinance, that Troy was pointing out. 8,400 square foot lot minimum, 70-foot lot frontage, side yard, rear yard, front yard setbacks. Those are what we're talking about, not the site plan, and we're not talking about seven, or 178 houses.
Right.
We're talking about 73 acres. He can try and develop it with lots of, using those minimums. In the beginning, I think the first phase is 80-foot frontage.
80-foot lots, yeah.
Is what he's shooting for. Now, we're not approving it based upon that, telling you right now. He can come back at 70s, because once you give him HDR zoning, if we choose to recommend that, he can do anything within HDR zoning that's permitted. So he can take them down to 70.
I just, I just have a general question, if I could.
Of course.
Have you considered bringing the entire property to us in a plan development?
I.
I mean, everybody's concerns up here are for the entire property. I think the residents' concerns are for the entire property.
There's.
We're looking at a small percentage of it, maybe 20% of the property right now.
It's not really a small percentage. We're taking nine holes out of the 36, and we're going to end up with 27 holes, of course.
Yeah, but you're, you're looking to, you've mentioned a few times, you're looking to recover 602 REUs.
Absolutely. I, I earned that right.
Okay, you're only proposing 179 right now, not even proposing that, you're proposing potentially 179.
Yes.
I would feel more comfortable looking at the entire 602, or potentially what you can do with the entire property?
There's no way I can tell.
Because, because I'm sure that's your intent?
Absolutely.
Is to develop the entire property?
Absolutely. Not, no, not the entire property. We're going to end up with an 18-hole golf course, for sure. Because we are marketing this property as a golf course community. And by marketing it as a golf course community, we have to maintain a golf course. So we will have an 18-hole golf course at the end of the day.
Yeah. It would be easier, sorry to interrupt, but it would be easier for me to visualize in a plan development how you're going to do that, how you're going to get 602 REUs and an 18-hole golf course on this property.
I don't know how. I don't know how. It was imposed upon me.
You're asking us to make decisions.
It was imposed upon me.
A little bit at a time, and you don't know how you're going to get to the end goal.
I don't know how. I really don't know how.
I'm not.
I could never predict the future.
Yeah.
I cannot predict if, if I can even build 179 lots. We're going to be doing the first 48 or 50, as we have shown Mr. Fox in the past and Troy. We cannot, we just, it's just too risky to do, to do or to predict what we, what we can do in the future. We just don't know.
Yeah, there would be another option here if it creates comfort with the Planning Commission and/or the public. We can deal with the 73 acres as the application is permit, is, is, has been submitted and review that. We also have the opportunity as a township to initiate our own rezoning for the balance of the property. And we can initiate a rezoning for a density that isn't HDR for the balance if you chose to. Now, it doesn't mean sometime down the road he couldn't come and ask to change it again, but you would certainly be making a statement as to what you felt that parcel was going to, was going to turn into. So you could go in with a medium-density rezoning for the balance for the 300-some-odd acres, under a separate application, under a separate night.
And I appreciate what Jeff is saying, Mr. Newsom saying, on, on that issue, but we have a lot of property owners that have, have a lot of land and have come in and sought zoning changes proportion, and we've never requested them to show for the full amount of their parcel. I mean, land is, can, land is, the ability of land that's not otherwise plotted has the ability to be divided, and we don't know. I mean, he's, he's suggesting that he's going to develop a property, or his property around the golf course. For all we know, he could sell the other, you know, acreage to another developer altogether, and we don't know that. We're only here on that 73 acres. He may even have IP, he may have ideas. That's not what we're presented with. The only thing we're presented with today is whether or not we approve this HDR, not what the rest of these developments is going to look at, look like. That's, and that's how a court would look at it. So just trying to let you guys understand that at the, at the end of the day, we have to look at the 73 acres. That's what it's all about.
I don't, I don't think the, I don't think the, the density is unreasonable. Don't get me wrong, I don't think it's unreasonable. It's right on our infrastructure. I think that if a site plan does go through, I'm going to heavily suggest sewer and water for the site.
We have, we have 603 sewer taps to use. We have no choice but the sewer. I don't know about the water, but the sewer.
So, but right now, the density doesn't scares me. What scares me is, is your plan, or lack thereof, for the rest of the acreage, and I'm concerned about that, so.
I agree. I'm, I'm very concerned with the remaining parcel in the back. And even though I recognize the comments made by other board members here, I do believe if we proposed rezoning this property to high-density, it sets a precedent for the remaining acreage, and that I feel very uncomfortable with. So I'm kind of leaning the same way Mr. Newsom is, is even though I understand the request is for a rezoning of 73 acres, I also recognize the situation that you are in with 600 sewer tap-ins, which tells me something's going to happen to the remainder of the property.
So Troy, can I ask you a question? So on packet page 36, under your recommendation for rezoning.
Do you have a question on it?
Yeah, I didn't know if you pulled, okay, yep, yep, okay. So your question is, number one is, the request, requested HDR zoning is consistent or generally consistent with the comprehensive plan. So when I look at the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan says the future land use plan is a central element of the comprehensive plan. On the future land use map that is not up there now, that doesn't call that parcel So I guess I'm just curious if you can help me out with how it's generally consistent with the comprehensive plan.
This is the future land use plan, which is one part of the comprehensive development plan. And this is the area over here, and I'm, sorry, I'm not zooming in further, because I want to also show the, the chart. It's in this, I'll call it a yellow with dotted category, and that is this medium suburban density residential category. We have other categories, medium urban density, there's even a multifamily one here, but, and these are not necessarily in order, as it is on the zoning map, these are not necessarily in order of, from lowest density, single-family to multifamily. But this is the category that it's in. And if, if you were to reference the previous staff report, not this current one with this packet, but in the previous staff report, a zoning map amendment, there are specific criteria that the Planning Commission and the board are to follow when reviewing a zoning map amendment. And in that first category, it talked about, and I'm going back to that staff report, consistency with the adopted comprehensive plan. And in that, we, we addressed what the density is of this category, we addressed what the category is to the west, we addressed what the category to the east is, since we're talking about this northern tier. And although the proposed rezoning is not consistent with this medium suburban density, because this is, doesn't quite get that dense. because this is, doesn't quite get that dense, it certainly is consistent with the property to the east, consistent with the property to the, to the west, to the north, it's office. Generally, office is compatible with just about any residential to the south, whether it be single-family or even multifamily, that's generally going to be consistent to abutting office. So for the most part, it's on three sides. There's some equal comparison. It appears to me, from my research, when this specific area was discussed, at the last time the planning commission discussed this area, which was before my time here, that the, the planning commission did not want to change anything because of litigation going on in this property. So this area's just been left in, let's see what happens with the litigation limbo.
But this parcel was not noted HDR on the comprehensive, or on-
Well, no, the, I guess if you-
There is no HDR on, on the future land use.
Yeah. This is the chart that I made, because I have the same problem with different zoning categories, with different future land use categories, and you can easily get them confused. This is the chart that I made, that I shared at the last meeting, and I guess through popular demand, I distributed it as well. This is the zoning category, here's HDR, and their minimum lot size, and then up above is the future comprehensive plan category, and you'd have to be in the medium urban density range to be consistent with that zoning category. The suburban one is a little bit larger lots.
So, like Nancy spoke during the call to the public, that was what she had noted, that it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan. So I have one other question. I would like to go on to the next page. It's page thirty-seven. And if you can help me with this, with number two. And can you, can you put that up on the screen, Troy, so the public can see it?
The future land use map, or?
No, not, no, not at all. So it's just our package that we're looking at tonight.
Oh.
On packet page thirty-seven.
Yep. Bear with me here. Okay.
Yeah, so it would be number two.
All right.
So how is number two actually being achieved?
So this is, HDR would serve as a transitional use between high-intensity and lower-intensity uses. So I'll go back to the future land use.
But just to keep it straight, HDR is high-intensity?
Well-
Correct. So that's how I read that, the requested-
Yep.
HDR zoning is intended to serve as a transitional, what's a transitional, what's a transitioning?
So transitional zoning, generally, if you, if you look at zoning almost in a pyramid form, industrial and commercial zonings are typically some of your more intense zoning. So from there, you would transition to office. And then from office, maybe to multiple-family zoning categories, then higher-density single-family, then you would transition to medium-density single-family, and then ultimately, you would have low-density single-family. So low-density single-family is buffered through all those categories in a, in a hypothetical context from industrial. So you can't always do that, you don't always have that tier-down, step-down zoning in place. So generally, you'll have, along major arterials, you'll have commercial or office, and then as you work away from those major arterials, you'll go to a higher-density residential, and then to a lower-density residential. So here, you've got office up on M-seven, or up on M-fifty-eight, and then HDR would be a transition to the remainder of this three-hundred-and-eighty-six piece, which would be medium-density. So it would serve as a transition going south from M-fifty-nine.
I can go in the west, too.
Well, to the west, arguably, that's a very tricky one to pinpoint down what its density is, because of the bonus that could be built in and part of the approval. Since there's no particular project that's specifically been approved, there's a, there's Newberry, little further to the east, but this, this piece here hasn't been, and then to the, I'm sorry, you were saying the west. It's, you would be at that same, to the, this future land use category over here would be exactly the same as the HDR is proposed.
Troy, can, can you blow that up, so that we're looking at-
Oh, yep.
That area?
I do have that ability here. I apologize for that.
So, if I can, Keith, so just like Commissioner Mitchell and Commissioner Newsom, I know we're here to look at the seventy-three acres, but it's hard to not look beyond that. And I think that the seventy-three acres is going to be precedent-setting. And, so I want to back up a little bit. When we were here with Newberry, talking about the special planning area, and what will happen there, and the density, they said, they used the term gateway, like, this is the gateway to Heartland. And so what I was picturing is traveling eastbound down M-fifty-nine, and getting to the gateway, which would be a typical lake route. And what I see is that the density on the east end of the prop, of Heartland Township, starting with the manufactured homes, whatever the proper name is for them, I'm not sure the name, on the south side of fifty-nine, and its density. And then what will happen to the special planning area as time goes on? And now we're transitioning farther to the west, down M-fifty-nine, to the, to the rezoning that we're here for today. I'm looking at this area, comparing it to, and I travel M-fifty-nine to the west, leaving the township. And this is where I'm struggling, with what inevitably the eastern end will look like as it is.
Well, Tom, on top of that, the solid orange piece at Pleasant Valley, M-fifty-nine, in the southeast corner, that is multiple-family. That is, is that multiple-family?
I'm not sure which one you're talking about.
Yeah, I believe that is. Right under the M-fifty-nine symbol, between the special planning-
This right here?
Yeah.
Well, we can, yes, I think you're right. That's, that's the future land use category for-
I think it actually does transition into less density.
Yeah. Ignore the park, the mobile home, manufactured home.
Well, you have, you have the mobile home park, then you have the orange piece, which is more of a multiple-family, you have the special planning area, and while it hasn't been approved, it's proposed for four-point-nine, five units per acre.
That's this northern thirty acres and this-
And the southern piece.
Yeah.
Right.
Nothing on this-
Not proposed yet, but it has the ability to be exactly the same, should it, should it pair up with it. So as you move to the west, you're down to two-point-four units per acre, which matches the orange to the west, the orange with the dots. And it is a buffer between the office. All that blue up there, navy blue, is office. And as I said, I think the transition to less density goes south.
Right.
I don't think it goes east to west. You're on your main corridor, you're on M-fifty-nine. And if we're short of anything, when we talked about changing the future land use map the last time around, it ignored this piece, maybe we should have discussed publicly ignoring it because of litigation.
Well-
That's why it wasn't brought up.
So I was kind of surprised when I looked close at the future land use map, because that wasn't talked about.
Intentionally.
Yes.
But, but if you look at it, it, it does get less dense from east to west, or, yeah, east to west, if you look at special planning area to the lakes area, let's call it the orange with the dots.
Correct, yes.
And then moving to the south is what I've said two weeks ago, and I said today, I perceive as you go south, it becomes less dense. There's no guarantee that anybody gets to use six-hundred-and-three REUs. I don't know whether it'll be four-hundred-and-three, or six-hundred-and-three, or seven-hundred-and-three. There's no plan. We're only talking about seventy-three acres. And the seventy-three acres and the density at two-point-four units per acre of his proposal, which I don't even think is achievable, is half of what the special planning area is on seventy-three acres. We have, allow, play off of Joe Colani's comment, there, we have a parcel of land owned by, owned in this township by one entity, that's significantly multiple, multiple, multiple times bigger than that piece, and we've chipped away pieces on that.
Just left.
No one has ever said, give me the plan, well, let's not go there, but let's just say, there is no, there is no approved plan for that. So I think it's, I don't, I don't agree with, I'm worried about, I, I don't worry about it, I'm, I would be concerned about to the south, but I know good planning principles, and he's requested a rezoning for seventy-three. And seventy-three that effectively is almost on M-fifty-nine. So that, that, that's why I try to keep coming back to it, seventy-three acres. I understand he owns more, but that's not what he's talking about.
I think it's going to get significantly much more difficult as you plan to develop the further portion of that property. We're having a hard time there with the portion.
How far is that bridge, where do you get to it?
Well, it's hard, because I don't recall when we had our informal, but, we probably should have said, do not bring a site plan, because I think the site plan is muddying the issue. And six-hundred-and-three REUs is muddying the issue.
I agree a hundred percent.
Okay. Honestly, I don't think you're going to get one hundred and seventy-eight units on there. But that's not the topic tonight.
We came up with a concept for seventy-three acres now. Planning commission wants a concept for the entire golf course. That seventy-three acre concept is going to change drastically, just by virtue of doing engineering.
It's part of how we get through things. We have to discuss them and work them out. Trying to stay on the seventy-three acres personally, myself.
If, I've been focusing more on the seventy-three acres, because I don't want to bring issues in that aren't appropriate for the seventy-three acres. If you look at the seventy-three acres along fifty-nine, you have all that commercial property expected as a future land use. You have the high-density, and even higher-density, the more east you go, I think those seventy-three acres stuck right there along fifty-nine is, or County Road is, is appropriate. And looking at that map, I think everybody would be, have heartburn with trying to make the entire three-hundred-and-eighty-three acres high-density. But we're only talking about the seventy-six acres. And I'm comfortable with the commercial area right there, which is where you'd want a little bit higher-density development to, to assist with the commercial. And you have a higher density, so it, it's appropriately placed according to the comprehensive plan, with the transition plan. So that's just my personal opinion, but I, I think that if you just focus on the seventy-three acres, I'm more comfortable making a decision on that than I am looking at the whole picture.
Okay. Sue?
I got to back off, and I'm really sorry, but I don't, I don't know the history from long ago. I'm trying not to go through it all, but you gave us the letter of that resolution. I'm not a lawyer, this isn't my strength, so I just have to back up. Because I feel like we're forced in this position, and I don't quite get it. And that's driving it, and that's why, you know, I kind of aligned with Jeff, where I needed to see the big picture, because the big picture says the whole site has six-hundred-and-two, six-hundred-and-three REUs, and I'm still trying to understand why. Where did that come from? Why are we all stuck with this? So when I read through the letter that you gave, originally, you said you had one hundred and forty-four REUs.
Yes.
And there were three-hundred-and-eighty-three acres. You said there's about eighty-five acres of wetlands. I do the math, then typically, that means you can almost have a density of one house per every two acres, that's the zoning today. I get that part. The part I don't get is reading this resolution, because it said that it was-
It was about the township resolutions.
Yes.
The township reassessed the property for the, because of the manner in which they were originally placed on the property. Mr. Yallow had separate lots that he had-
For close.
For, well, he had them situated, but those REUs were not properly assessed. So the township reassessed it. That's how the six-hundred-and-two REUs were placed on there.
Right, six-hundred-and-three.
Six-hundred-and-three.
And it called it a corrected special assessment.
A corrected special assessment.
And it said the remaining shall be payable in fourteen equal installments, starting December first, two thousand and eleven. I don't understand what that means, payable on equal installments. Is that something different than these REUs, or what's that mean?
That's the number of years that we're-
He bought them at a set price per REU, totals X. They divided it by fourteen, or whatever it was.
Well, yeah, it was actually originally twenty, or-
Whatever.
The number was out.
Okay. How did that number get decided? Why did we get stuck with a hundred, six-hundred-and-three? Why are we now here, having to help you, which we all want to?
We're not stuck with it, that's the way it is.
Okay.
We're not stuck with anything. He's stuck with it, I'm stuck with it.
But I mean-
We do not, we do not have to give him zoning for six-hundred-and-three REU.
We're only asking him for, he's only here for seventy-three.
He's only asking for zoning for seventy-three acres for an HDR.
But he's talking down the road where he's going to be forced to have to come back, as he said in his letter, for higher density. So I'm just getting confused, because I also see you want to hold on to a golf course that has, you know, a hundred and eighty of those acres. So again, we're now getting more dense. So I just, I'm sorry, I'm trying to look at this, at the big picture, I agree that the density should be more dense on fifty-nine, given. But as you work our way down south, and with this very sensitive site with the wetlands, the whole picture, I keep coming back to. That's just my two cents. So I agree that, sure, it makes sense to start there, but when I start hearing down the road, you're going to have to come back, because you're going to hold on to your eighteen holes, and you're going to be forced to get these six-hundred-and-three, I'm having troubles. It's just my two cents, and you can hear I'm concerned, because I'm torn, and I don't get why we're here today. So I'm sorry, I'm not usually emotional, but it's tough.
You just want to focus on the seventy-three acres that I'm asking for.
Right. He's here for seventy-
You go further, it gets really confusing.
I know, but when I hear down the road, where you're still trying to have the course, I don't know how to-
The issue tonight's not going to guarantee him anything in the future.
It, all it's doing is giving him, we're recommending to the board an HDR zoning for seventy-three acres. Ten years from now, when that's built out, or whatever it takes, or whatever it is, he comes back and wants to do something with that property, it's another conversation.
I get it.
But that's not the application today.
Right, that's right.
That's like asking a very large property owner in here, all the property owners in here, to, to give us a plan for every square foot of their property.
Right.
And that's not realistic.
No, it's not. But in this situation, because we have this added, you know-
But you don't, we don't have a responsibility to give him zoning for six-hundred-and-three acres.
Okay.
Right? He may be done at seventy-
Six-hundred-and-three acres.
REUs, I mean, six-hundred-and-three REUs.
If it would help, similar landowners also have significant number of REUs as well.
Okay.
And, and we, and we have parceled off, this body has parceled off land before.
But, but he, he may get a HDR zoning, he may get a hundred lots on that seventy-three acres, that's it, and he's got five-hundred-and-three REUs left, and they may not go a lot further. It just depends on what, what happens at that time. What are the environmental concerns? What are the regulations? Because he's going to have to abide by all that.
Right.
And he may be having to come back with a PD at that point. Straight-up zoning may not work-
Right.
On the balance.
Exactly. And quite honestly, we're not here to plan for six-hundred-and-
No.
You know, three. He may get, have to, he, he's the one who agreed to those REUs at the end of the day.
Right.
There was a contract, and he agreed to those REUs.
Joe, are those other parcels you're talking about, the other landowners?
We, I will tell you, by the way, that contract does not specify how, where, where those, you know, where those REUs would be placed on the property.
Right. It can't find anything.
Do you know the other parcels you're talking about, the other landowners in the township? Are, are they going for rezoning also?
Well, we have landowners who, they're not right now, no, but some of them are in a PD, some of them are in the special planning area. We're going to, we're going to be faced with the same issue, coming, doesn't matter, we're going to be faced with the same issue. So I, just like I said, the issue before us is the seventy-three acres.
I'll just comment, I'm not, like I said, I'm, earlier, I'm not opposed to the density on the seventy-three acres, but I'm just looking ahead, thinking that there could have been a better way to present this to the, to the planning commission here, comprehensively in a planned development agreement.
I cannot.
I just, I cannot. I understand, but I'm just saying that's- I just, I understand, but I'm just saying that's, my comfort level would have been much, much higher if it was.
I just don't want to hypothetically plug in residential units that I may never build.
You're hypothetically plugging them in on this one, so I don't know, I-
No, these I'm building.
Might be a little bit more cost for you up, uh, above, but it's a better comfort level for us when we can have a bigger picture, because we're not just planning for your area, we're planning for the entire township here.
The picture at this point is, the 73 acres with the north nine holes will be gone once, once the planning commission, township board approves the rezoning, and then they approve the site plan, and then we start engineering, and we start the underground work and building the homes. By doing that, we still have 27 hole golf courses that we're running as a commercial entity. We've been running a 36-hole golf course for many, many, many years in this township. And that's where I have to leave it at this point. I have no plans for any future development at this point.
Well, and the other point is, he's going for straight zoning, he's going to have to follow the zoning ordinance, there's no negotiation, like a PD.
That's right.
So, um, on this particular 73-acre piece, you can pull the book out and read, and that's what he'll be having to do.
Yeah, open space, wetland protection, all that.
That's why I don't want to get into the site plan, it doesn't seem possible, but I'm not an engineer.
Right.
And he has said it hasn't been reviewed by an engineer. So where are we? Any other questions or comments? Everybody voiced their opinions and concerns, questions?
So I do appreciate the viewpoint, though, that we are buffering from M59. Right, that we have the office zoning, helping the office at M59 Blue, and we are just beyond that.
Well, and I think you are east to west, because he's going up against the special planning area that is twice the density with the bonus. Now, yes, the site plan isn't approved, but the site plan that we're reviewing, that they have taken to MDOT, that we've given comments on, are at just under five units per acre. And even if you do the simple math on his, he's 2.44, he's half.
Half.
Though, east to west, it, it gets less. And then it's just up to what happens south of there, of the 73.
I would say it's consistent or compatible with the property directly to the west. The lake properties there are pretty dense. You can see it on the map.
Yeah, that's what he's kind of proposing.
Isn't Forest Brook, uh, one, just immediately connected to the next one?
I thought, um-
Jumped by Nashville, isn't it?
That's Forest Brook, right there, down in that little hook, right there.
That's south of Longtree?
Yeah, this is-
Right there.
We built those units, we built them.
Yes, that's you.
Bottom from George.
Right.
This future land use map is, has done us a real disservice. Our property should have been the same light brown, all the way to the, to the stripe thread. That's what it should have been, to begin with. It's, you cannot, I mean, you're jumping from-
Well, there are a lot of-
-heavy density, to lighter density, to the heaviest density.
Yeah, Mr. Yallow, though, there are, there are a lot of hands in the cookie jar, okay? Including yours, so.
Yes, yes.
But his point is, it would have been much easier.
Right.
I agree.
It would have been.
But there are reasons why it's not.
Understand.
It wasn't initiated here. Okay, so where do you want to go? Are you, are you going to try that?
I recommend the approval of rezoning application, number 361, request to rezone approximately 73 acres. That include the property addressed as 12396 Cundy Road, um, tax ID 4708-26-100-012, and a portion of 12400 Highland Road, Heartland Glen Golf Club, parcel ID 4708-26-100-019, from CA, which is Conservation Agricultural, to HDR, High Density Residential. Based on the following findings. Requested HDR is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan. The requested HDR zoning is intended to serve as a transitional use between high-density and lower-density uses, and it's appropriate for the subject property. Number three, potential uses allowed in the requested HDR zoning are compatible with the surrounding uses and zoning. And number four, the subject property can comply with the dimensional requirements of the HDR district.
Wait a second on that. One second. We have a, um, motion recommending rezoning from application 361 from Commissioner Voight, a second from Commissioner Colani. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, say nay.
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 We have, three? We have three nays, the nays would be Grissom, Mitchell, and Murphy.
Okay.
So congratulations.
Thank you.
I guess your next stop is the township board.
I believe I heard two parcel ID numbers.
Yeah, there was a, I was going to say something, there was an error, uh-
We have three parcel IDs.
Just the whole line, when you recited the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, there's three parcel IDs.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Three addresses. I was about to say something.
How do we correct that? I've not had that in 14.
Did we just include that there?
Did you intend to, uh-
I intend to re-
Go from the staff report dated February 16th, 2017, prepared by the planning department?
I did, I, that was my-
Was that a typographical reading of that?
Right.
Is that my understanding?
Yes.
The, you that seconded it, was it your understanding that he was attempting to?
Yes.
And those that voted in favor of it, was that also your understanding?
Yes.
I think that clarifies that.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, okay, next up, item 7C, discussion of the Livingston County Road Commission policy regarding wireless communication equipment. Troy, this would be over to you.
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to say on this, I'll, I'll try to keep it brief, but essentially, the Livingston County Road Commission, um, is looking to adopt a policy regarding the installation of wireless communication equipment facilities within their road right-of-way. There have been instances, maybe not so much in Livingston County, but within other county road agencies, where these wireless communication companies have went to the local municipalities and tried to, uh, inform them that they did not need county road commission authorization to install equipment on existing utility poles in the road right-of-way. And I think the county road commission is just attempting to make it clear to all the local jurisdictions that, um, anybody that comes in wanting to do any work underground, above ground, within the road right-of-way, should go to the county road commission for permit and approval. And they're attempting to, uh, adopt a policy. They've reached out to get comments, if any, from local municipalities, and therefore I've sent it off to you to capture your wisdom, knowledge, and thoughts to share with the county road commission.
I think this is a great thing for a committee to look, take a look at.
I don't think we have that kind of time.
We don't have any time.
Well, I, I, my, I would object, I think any time, any type of company would like to utilize the public rights of way. Under the law, typically, most utility companies are required to obtain a franchise from the township, uh, to utilize the public rights of way. Secondly, uh, they're, they're, I, I think they're trying to circumvent the way in which, you know, these things should be dealt with. They'll probably, because they're probably powerful enough, they'll probably get an exemption from the state legislature, because they'll like to give utility companies and wireless companies all whatever they want. So I would, I would, I think they need a permit from us, as well as a permit from the road commission.
And I think a lot of this is a requirement, there, the, isn't this putting a, I don't know if it's a requirement, but the onus on the township to notify the county if someone comes for a permit?
Yeah, it is. It is putting an onus on the township, that if, if wireless communication company A comes into Heartland Township, we now have a duty and an obligation to notify, not so much you on the planning commission, but we'd have a duty and obligation to notify, uh, the county road commission, that we are in receipt of an application, and that application is for work in their road right-of-way, and we are awaiting instructions, I guess.
And when I read that, I said, "Well, they're still going to, they're not taking away our right to review and approve." So, what are they doing, just telling us, "We're accept," they're gonna, they're gonna adopt this, and they're gonna put it on us to make sure we make a call to Howell, when you get somebody at your desk?
There was one area in there that, um, I didn't necessarily disagree with, but it did cause concerns. Wireless communication industry is changing and evolving, maybe like any industry, but the, at, at one time, it used to be, um, every wireless communication company wanted their own tower with their own antenna, and you would find 50 feet away, a second tower with their separate antenna on there. And through time, we've managed to co-locate, uh, multiple carriers on a single tower. And the, the change now is that they can affix these antenna onto much shorter things, such as utility poles. And one of the items that is identified in this policy is they are trying to encourage any of these wireless communication facilities from actually located in the road right-of-way, and prefer them to be on private property. And as this technology progresses and changes, these antenna may become less and less visible to where, when they're installed on a utility pole in the right-of-way, the common person can't even see them. And I would hate to see where we have that ability to install them on a utility pole, but due to some policy, we're having to install a separate pole, uh, 20 feet away on private property, because it can't go on a pole in the right-of-way. But, um, those are just some of my comments that I shared with the township manager. I don't know if you guys would have the same concerns or comments, and again, they're not prohibiting it, they're just placing that, that they're encouraging that not to be in the road right-of-way.
I, I have two comments.
Sure.
First one is, is this the same road commission that's abandoned all the townships in the county? Pretty much. The other thing is, now they want, now they want our help. The other thing is, what do we currently do in the township for private roads?
So, first one was more of a comment, so I'm not going to address that one. The second one is a question, and the question is, what do we do for private roads? Well, private roads are essentially under private ownership. It would be up to those private owners to decide whether or not they want to permit anything to occur within their easement area. And if they so chose not to allow it, so be it. There would be nothing that the township could do about that.
Do we issue permits now for the wireless communication?
Well, we have the site plan review, yeah, for the cell towers.
But for the cell towers? Yeah, for the cell towers. But I'm talking about underground wiring.
No.
Is that, that's what they're referring to also, is that?
Yep, they are.
Underground wiring along the road.
And if they were to do underground wiring in a private road easement, that would require their, uh, private road approval.
Right, and what do we do now for public roads? Do we, do we issue permits?
We send them to the county road commission.
Okay, so we already pretty much do what they're asking us to do.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments on that one?
Did I address both your comment and question?
I didn't hear.
I think it would be a nice way to get, uh, maybe there's a way in which, see, I think they're getting out of that business of the cell towers, but a lot of those cell towers are placed on public lands.
Uh-huh.
And they pay a lease.
And rent.
And rent. Um, and now-
Public lands or private lands?
Well, public lands and private lands. They, a lot of your farmers, you see them out in the field.
Oh, yeah.
It's like a nice annuity, you know, for them. I mean, you know, if they can get a cell tower placed out in the middle of their field, which I don't, I have no objection to that, um, it's all part of, I being a property owner. But I do have, you know, I, I'm, I'm struggling with the idea of what these things are going to look like on, on our ITC poles that, you know, Doc already, our Brock, our township, so.
But most of those, aren't they going optics, anyway, for our optics, and they're all buried, so I don't know.
Maybe.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, I think I've got enough comments.
All right. Thanks. All right, let's move to item eight, which is called to the public. Anyone tonight?
Um, Shannon, I live on Longtree Road. Regarding your approval, I'm really not surprised. Figured it would go through, but I find it very interesting that you're comparing this property to the lake's property. Everybody knows that lake property's built up. Some of those houses have been there for years. Some are, what, 10 feet from the road, and I don't think you'd duplicate that effort. Disappointed, um, extremely disappointed, because it is going to go back. He even said so. And the more dense it gets, it's, it's affecting me. You know, I'm not wanting a high-density residential in my front yard, and that's what it's going to be. And it's going to take my property and just destroy the value. I'm not surprised, I'm very disappointed.
Hey, thank you.
I guess-
Hello.
Hi, Teresa Wright. I was, um, wanting to make a comment when I saw the maps of the different zones. The one we've, at the golf course, had a lot of water, wetlands in it, and I don't think anywhere in your calculations for the density, did anybody say, "This one had a lot of wetlands, that one looked pretty dry," and it just, you're comparing apples and oranges? I didn't hear anybody say, "Well, it's 73 acres, but 20 acres of that is wetlands, that we can't really do anything with it." I, it's just asking for the rest of it to get built up, and it's saying that the rest, the other 300 acres can be built up as well, and it's just, it's just wrong.
Yeah, I, and what he, we received a recommendation to the board for is to build an 8,400-square-foot lot. He didn't, it, the, the wetlands in that don't come into any of this right at this moment, because that comes at site plan. When he proposes a site plan, the bare minimum size lot he can have in that subdivision or that development will be 8,400 square feet. So I, that, his site plan throws everybody off, including us, I've been doing this for almost 15 years now, and you get, you know, you get fixed on that, and that's, it probably should have never been brought out. The discussion really is, how big is the lot? And he may get 100 on there, and he may get 178. I doubt it. But the, the wetlands do enter into the calculation, because that's part of how he's not going to get to 178, because he has a lot of restrictions and requirements to meet. And when you put all those restrictions on that property, he's going to get to develop what's left. And he can develop it with an 8,400-square-foot lot. There's going to be a lot of open space in that development when it's done, because so much of it's wet. He can't build on it.
That's a valid point, but then, from what I was hearing tonight, it's determining what can happen on the next 100 acres.
No, it's not. I think there are fears of that, but that's, the application was for 73 acres. There, you really cannot address the remaining 300-plus acres this evening. That's not the application. It isn't going to do anything to that until he brings an application for that together.
The other thing I heard was that it was sewage and water was the assumed high-density, there's no water. So you're assuming that there's going to be room on this lot for a well?
He has to deal with that. Again, it wasn't a site plan review.
Okay.
I, he chose to go with a zoning change versus a PD. And the zoning changes, and there are very specific requirements on that. He'll have to find a way to make that happen.
And if he has to do wells, then guess what? He's probably not going to yet.
He's not going to, he's not going to get the density.
He may not get 178, uh, homes.
He, this, it's- This, it's not gloom, despair, and agony. I assure you, and we have worked on this, and I know we would, you'd like to see two-acre parcels. It is not, okay? It is not going to be what, it is not going to be what he proposed. That's never going to happen, number one. Number two, you are on Lone Tree. Is that correct? I remember you from two weeks ago. So by the time you get down there, it won't be an eighty-four-hundred square foot lot. He's saying ten years, he's saying ten years on this. Okay, we, okay, we generally don't open the Call to the Public. I made a mistake in interacting, so this is why we don't. So thank you. Anybody else would like to come forth? But we could sit here for a half an hour going back and forth. And you are Mr. Poey.
Yes.
I remember you from two weeks ago.
I didn't talk two weeks ago, but.
No, but you did, you did afterwards, and you did send us a letter.
Yes, we did. Yeah, I understand the whole process of why we had to go through, to get the rezoning. And I understand also the entities that you're bringing up, and we discussed those before too. I guess one of the, one of the questions that I had was, now that this, the board has approved the rezoning from CA to high-density, if, if, I'm trying to play devil's advocate here, if, in the event that his site plan doesn't meet the muster and, and he does, he decides to back out of development, what happens to that seventy-two acre parcel now that it's zoned high-density? Does it stay high-density? Let's say if he decides that, one, he forecloses on it like his other four properties, or two, he possibly sells it. And if he sells it, does that zoning for that, the high-density, does that go with it?
That's correct.
I mean, is that?
Goes with the land.
Yeah, because I think that's something that, now that it's, now that it's zoned, zoned high-density, that's pretty much etched in stone. Is that correct?
Until the next rezoning.
Until the next rezoning.
I mean, they could, somebody else could own it, or he could ask for a different zoning and go through this whole process again.
Okay.
Everybody in the township has the right to seek rezoning of their property that they own. I mean, you, if you, if you live on, I mean, it doesn't mean you're going to get the rezoning. The whole point of the rezoning is to establish the rights that you may do with your property at, at this time. And it, and it runs with the land until such time it is changed. So that HDR would run with the land. If he were to sell that property, it would run to the next developer or whoever he sold it to. And then at the end of the day, if someone came in and said, you know, we want to change something else, we want to modify, they can come in for rezoning themselves, just no different than any of the farmers that live here or the developers who have the commercial areas, so.
I read through the, the legal transcripts from 2011 also, and I understood how, how all those REUs that were originally, his intention was for, for all five properties. And then when he foreclosed on four of them, then they all kind of piled into this, his last, the last entity there. So if, if he forecloses on that, what happens to all those REUs? Or if he sells them, what happens to all those REUs?
Well, if he sells them, he probably would like that.
No, I mean, if he sells the property, do those?
Sells the property, those REUs go with them?
Have to go with the property.
Right.
All right. So if he, if he forecloses on that property, what happens to?
You mean if the, if he fails to pay his?
Correct, where he hasn't paid.
Right.
He's delinquent already.
Then that, that does a couple of things. One, it goes to, through the process of, just like a tax foreclosure. And there's a, each year you're delinquent, those, those taxes go up for sale when they're foreclosed on, so someone could buy them. So, or B, after three years, there's a scavenger sale if no one were to pick up those delinquent parcels. And there's another, the process then allows the county to foreclose on the property and take the property. They can also, a part of that process is they first offer to the local municipality if they want to take the parcel before, before they foreclose on it. The idea behind the REUs is, is that the value of the property would pay for the cost of those, at a minimum, the cost of the REU. So if the REU is, say, seven thousand dollars per REU, and he owes X number, the idea behind is the properties should be able to pay for the cost of the REU. Just like your mortgage, you know, if you're, you have a mortgage, the bank is banking on the fact that there's, they're loaning you more, the property's worth more than what you owe on it. Of course, back in 2009, they were giving out a hundred and twenty percent mortgages and screwed everybody up, but, you know, at the end of the day, that's, that's where, how the foreclosure process works. I'm being very general.
I understand, yeah. But I, I just, you know, bringing the point up, since now we've kind of passed the point of no return on, on, on the rezoning, so.
The next step is the board is really, we're only a recommending body here, so.
Right, that's, yeah, so I, I mean, I just, I was trying to figure out what, you know, some of the options that might be down the road. Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much. Anyone else?
Carl Redner, also of 2202 Wilson Lane. And I just bring forward a point of information to answer a question that was brought up previously. Court of Appeals case, Heartland Glen Development LLC, the township of Heartland, was published on October 20th, 2015. For those who are interested in reading it, mitchbar.org/five/ opinions/ appeals/2015/102015.pdf. On page nine, reads as follows. Despite Heartland Development's objection, the township did not saddle it with additional REUs. Instead, the township reallocated the REUs that Heartland Development had initially sought. And so I bring that forward as commentary to the hardship the petitioner alleges to have undergone. Shoo, thank you.
Anyone else?
William Coon, I live on 12300 Lone Tree, just south of the golf course, which is directly across from the township property, seventy acres. Are we considering that acreage in, not right, not in this bit of information, we're trying to rezone and all, but are we considering this piece of property to complement whatever he's going to do in the future? That's seventy acres, the township owns.
Second, the township park property?
Township property, just north.
Yeah, that's a.
Of Lone Tree.
That's a public park. Oh, north of Lone Tree. Oh, I'm sorry.
Those seventy acres that I believe township owns.
Right.
If you can bring it up, you show everybody what I'm talking about. Right there.
I think it's this piece here.
That piece there, and I believe that one there. That's a forty, and that's a thirty.
Yeah.
Seventy acres. I believe the township owns all seventy of that. I know they own the forty of it, or used to. And are you guys considering that to complement whatever, I believe that was Basil? I'm not sure if that was Basil. It was here, owns.
No, that was, no, that was not whoever that is. Yeah.
And of course, he owns, he also owns thirty acres south of Lone Tree. What's he going to do with that? Is he going to use that for golf course? Is he going to try to come across? And speaking of private roads, what do we call this Lone Tree Road? Who owns it? Township?
It's a.
The county?
It's, it's a non, it's a county road that's not supported by county road funds. So it's technically, they've never fully abandoned the road in the sense of a county road. No funds are used to, they call, they decertified it or something that's.
Yeah, I'd like to know what it's really called.
Yeah.
Back in, back in the seventies, they, they voted on getting rid of it. They decided not to.
My, my suggestion on that is the township planning or DPW department has some of the history on that, but you can also call the road commission and Mike Crane, and they, he's the manager of the road commission, and he will have someone, one of his engineers or staff, go through that history. He is very, he's, I'm sure he knows that very, very well, you know, because that.
Well, yeah.
At the other end of Lone Tree, it's supposed to, you know, there's a.
That, stop check is on that.
Yeah, exactly. And that is all blocked off, and it's never been improved. My understanding is it is not an abandoned, I mean, the road commission never goes, like, there's a process by which the road commission actually takes out or abandons a road. I think all they did was decertify it so it doesn't receive any funding for that portion of the.
And it doesn't. It hasn't, from sixty, it's on seven, from sixty-eight.
And I've been down that road, and I can tell you, I, it's, it's, there's not, it gets really wet back there, and it's.
Right now, it's really wet.
Really wet, so I know exactly.
That road is just tearing apart. But I'm not asking for them to come in. I'm just wondering if anybody knew, since we're talking about private, and then I was thinking about private property, I'm thinking, we're talking about these cell towers, and you're, I don't know what your plans are with cell towers. You're not thinking about throwing a cell tower out there on township property down this private driveway, which we don't even know what it really is.
There's nothing contemplated right now, other than, I don't know if the property's been listed by the township or if it's just right now being held by the township there. I know, I have not been presented as a township liaison to the board.
Is there any REUs with it?
No.
No, so it's not a big issue.
I'm just curious at this point on that, and whether you guys are using, trying to complement what the development is going to do with that seventy acres, because.
There's been, there's no discussion of that. There's no discussion of the other three hundred-and-some-odd acres that he owns.
Oh, no, no, that's not. If you are thinking of complimenting that, that's what you plan on doing with that property is to save for maybe with his development. I mean, I find it hard to believe that he's going to try and put a hundred-and-some-odd little houses on golf course property. You know, he, like you said, he ain't going to get it. He ain't going to put that many on there. So that makes me think he's opening the door to something else. But that's my thoughts.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else tonight? We're going to let him finish, in case somebody's being shy. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yep, thanks. Last call. Anyone? All right, we're going to close Call to the Public and move to item nine, Planner Report.
Troy?
I have nothing tonight.
All right. Committee reports, comments, anyone? None? I need a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved. Or?
Mitchell and Murphy, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those name motion carries. Thank you and good night.